Welcome, everybody. I will call our meeting to order. The regular city council meeting of January 12th, 2021, being held via WebEx. And our first item is always is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able to, please put your camera on and unmute yourself. And if we could do a collective pledge of allegiance, I would greatly appreciate it. I pledge allegiance.
Flag.
United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God.
With the principle of justice.
Liberty and justice.
For all.
Thank you, everyone. The next item is our open forum. I will pass it on to Executive Assistant Wynn to just go over how folks can participate in the open forum. And then just make sure that we give some time and space in case anyone is on the line.
Thank you, Mayor. We allow our residents to call in and participate in the open forum. You can call 612-861-0651. And you'll be connected to myself. And we can patch you through to the live meeting. Residents are also free to comment to me prior to meetings. And you can send that to kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. Or you can call my desk phone at 612-861-9711. And if you supply a comment to myself, then we can have those read during the meeting.
Thank you, Assistant Wynn. We'll just wait a little bit to make sure nobody calls in. Okay, do we have any folks on the line?
I do not have any callers.
All right. I will close the open forum seeing that nobody has showed up. And we can move to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of November 30th, 2020, the city council work session of December 8th, 2020, and the city council meeting of December 8th, 2020.
Madam Mayor, I'll move approval. This is Supple.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The meeting minutes have been moved by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The meeting minutes have been approved. The next section on our agenda is a few presentations. We have three. And the first one is a Human Rights Commission Annual Report Presentation. And we have Heather Eastland, who is the Chair of the Human Rights Commission with us tonight to share that report. Hi, Heather, welcome.
Hello, thank you for having me. This will be brief. Let me get to the right screen here. I'm going to be looking off to the left. Sorry, I'm not going to be looking into the camera so I can look at my notes over here. There are a couple of big highlights from the year. The first one, obviously, which we all know about is the COVID impacts on our work plan for 2020. Some of our major hallmark events didn't get to happen this year simply because of social distancing and cancellation of the big events like Pen Fest, the naturalization ceremony. We decided to push back the Outstanding Citizen Award this year because we didn't receive nominations due to the pandemic. And there are a number of other events that had to be pushed off. We're really excited and looking forward to 2021 and hopeful that with the vaccine present that we'll be able to get back to a more normal schedule for 2021. That doesn't mean we didn't get any work done. We did get some things done, which is really exciting. One of the pieces that was dear to my heart was working with Richfield Towers. That was an event that we had to change drastically due to the pandemic. But it was a great outreach opportunity. I personally had never been to the towers. And it was an amazing experience to get over there, meet the staff, and meet the residents. So we catered in Jimmy John's lunch. And then I was able to talk with residents about the census and voting by mail. So I answered questions for people who didn't know how those things worked or weren't sure if they'd signed up and pointed them to the resources that they needed. We also did our three proclamations this year, which I think are really important for the city to acknowledge a variety of groups. This year, we did LGBTQIA. We did the American Disability Act. And then the celebration of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, Women's Right to Vote, which is a big deal this year. On the report is also Pen Fest from 2019 just because of the cycle of how the report was done. It wasn't included in the prior report. So that part is a little more than a year old, but something that we did this past year, where we had a booth at Pen Fest and we put together a, ooh, I'm not even sure what you call it. It's like a flip chart with questions so people could answer different trivia pieces about the Human Rights Commission and get to know us and our work. I would say something that we're really looking forward to for 2021 is Bill coming on board and having a more close liaison with the city and getting to be more directly involved in the direction related to equity and inclusion. I think that our commission will be able to provide a lot of support to Bill and vice versa, and that will feel closer tie with the council. Over the last couple of months, we've just spent a lot of time talking about our priorities, ways that the commission could be thinking about DEI initiatives internally. Our commission is pretty white. And for a commission representing human rights, we don't feel like that's a great representation of our community. So it's both about recruiting people of color or people from diverse backgrounds. And it's about also retaining them. We've had a couple of people of color on our commission who have showed up for a couple of meetings and then have not really stayed on to do the work. And we recognize that we have growth opportunities to get those people to stay retained. So we're excited to talk with Bill about his ideas around that and develop a specific DEI work plan for our commission, thinking broadly about ways to kind of help the city with those initiatives as well. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation, Heather. Any questions or comments for the Human Rights Commission? Councilmember Supple.
I've had the pleasure of being the liaison to the Human Rights Commission. And I just wanted to thank all of the members of the commission. There's a lot of passion and enthusiasm and energy there. And I just wanted to say thank you. And I'm looking forward to all the things you're going to do next year, too.
Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Wayland.
I'll just say quickly, you're referring to Bill. Just for anyone listening, that is the announcement that we are going to be.
So sorry.
That's okay. No, we do it all the time. And I'm sure I do it, too, where we refer to people and people may not know who they are. But this was the big, exciting addition we talked about in the budget work, but that we are now going to have an Equity and Inclusion Administrator. I'm going to forget his title. But someone to lead the Equity and Inclusion effort. So I'm excited about that. Excited that the Human Rights Commission is already gearing up for what that looks like and how they work together. That's really encouraging. And I also just want to lift up that I think you're asking exactly the right questions in terms of how do we become more diverse in our leadership? That I think, having been in many largely white organizations, and many of our organizations around the community are still pretty segregated, and not purposely, but that there's always kind of this question of why don't our leaders of color stick around? And I think, I think that, I've heard some people talk about it in terms of like, if you're already, if you already have the table set and you've had for decades, white people there leading it, that saying, pull up a chair, people of color, like, but that is not, it's still a white space. And so I think figuring out how, as a community, we diversify our leadership is also about, it's much deeper than that and acknowledging the ways that whatever, whatever the color of the people in the room that we as an institution and most institutions still operate on white culture and white norms, and that that doesn't always feel like a welcoming space for people. So I appreciate that the commission is asking the hard questions and willing to dive into that work.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. And Heather, thank you so much for being such a great chair and for leading the Human Rights Commission during this time that we're experiencing and just pivoting and adapting to COVID and everything else that has happened, the killing of George Floyd. So many things that have really are square in the world of our Human Rights Commission. So thank you for leading that charge. And I just wanted to highlight, you know, it is very exciting to have a new staff person focused on equity and embedding that across the city and looking to the Human Rights Commission and all of our commissions as a connective tissue between our city government and our community. And what does that look like to bring them together? It's at the intersection. It's right in the home of our commissions. That's community-led, but informing the work of the council in the city. So I just think that there's a lot of opportunity for the Human Rights Commission to lead and probably, you know, move us in a space to what does it look like to do the hard work of embedding that, not just in the city government, but across the whole community? Because we also have a community engagement infrastructure and leadership infrastructure in Richfield that's not necessarily reflective of everybody who lives here as well. And we want to hold the bench of our leaders to run for office, to lead all different things in our community. And there's a lot of building that we need to do. And so what does it look like to not do things that might be kind of tokenizing efforts where folks then feel not welcomed? And, you know, I remember when we used to look at racial diversity of our boards and commissions, a lot of that movement was focused on commissions, like the Health Commission, the Community Services and Human Rights versus across all of the different commissions. So it's just about continuing to do that hard work and building those foundations. And hopefully, we're giving the community, staff, and everybody those foundational pieces, like the staff, like the work that you're doing, to help us build that because it's collective. So I see your role and the role of the Human Rights Commission is so important in helping us figure out how we're going to lead into the future, but in a way that's not just putting it all on the city government, but building a healthy, robust, critically engaged community that works together to build the future. And that's, you're leading that. So thank you for that leadership.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, Heather. And we hope you have a great night. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. You, too.
The next item is playing of the video of the swearing-in from January 11th, 2021. So just pass it to staff. I'm not sure who will be helping us in setting the video up.
Thank you, Mayor. We will, yesterday, January 11th, we were able to have Councilmembers Wayland, Hayford, O'Leary, and Troutman come in and do their swearing-in with our Deputy Clerk, Beth Van Hoos. It was quiet, but we were able to accomplish it. And so I'm going to quick pass it over to Jean, and she's going to play our clip for that.
I raise your hand. I, Sean Hayford O'Leary, solemnly swear.
I, Sean Hayford O'Leary, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Richfield.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Richfield.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Councilmember Ward 1.
Of City Councilmember Ward 1.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
And to the best of my ability and honor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Sean Hayford O'Leary, do solemnly swear.
I, Sean Hayford O'Leary, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Richfield.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Richfield.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Councilmember Ward 2.
Of City Councilmember Ward 2.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ben Wayland, do solemnly swear.
I, Ben Wayland, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Richfield.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Richfield.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Councilmember Ward 3.
Of City Councilmember Ward 3.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you for sharing that video. Wow, that's so different to just watch the swearing-in one by one via YouTube. But thank you and welcome again. Welcome back and welcome, Sean, for the first time for joining the council. A lot of folks don't necessarily understand or know, you know, how local government elected official positions work. I was talking to someone last night and they said, do you have, is this what you do? And I'm like, I have a full-time job, too. And, you know, people, this is really community service because we love and care for our community. And really, it's the closest level of government to our neighbors. And it's where we can make the most change. And that's why we all do this. So thank you for your service, your committed service. Especially, you know, now, things have changed so much politically. Things have become difficult in many ways. But all the reason more why we're doing what we're doing and why it matters. So thank you for, to your families. Thank you to each of you for your leadership. And we're glad that you're on board with us. Any other comments from any, from any council members? Councilmember Wayland. Sorry, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to say, it's such, it's such a privilege to serve the city in this way. And it may, it may seem like something quaint, but it is a privilege to take an oath to support the Constitution. Yeah, and in really dynamic times, we all have, we have different opinions, but we have, we have a common document. We have a common cause. And it's a privilege to serve. And for residents that think we're getting it right or getting it wrong, we're the elected folks that still have our cell phone numbers on the city webpage. And so I just want to encourage folks to reach out anytime. And just to say thank you for, for the residents who supported my campaign. And for those that didn't, I'm grateful to be, to be a representative anyways. And I'm glad to hear from you in any season.
Thank you, Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Wayland.
Yeah, I want to, just to echo the welcome to Sean and congratulations again. And then, similar to Councilmember Troutman's comments, just want to say that I, this is my second time taking the same oath. And admittedly, the first time, probably partially just because of nerves. But the words did not, the words did not stick out as much as just the moment. But this, this week, given everything that happened last week, swearing to stand by and uphold the Constitution, our democracy as we know it feels especially important. And so I just felt the real gravity of that moment and appreciate all of the people, leaders, elected leaders or just residents, who, given how scary and awful the events of last Wednesday were, that everyone who makes a continued commitment to stand by our democracy just really appreciate how important that is right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Any other comments from folks? Councilmember Hayford, Hayford O'Leary.
First, yeah, appreciating the reflection. I think I was still nervous. So I don't know that I fully absorbed the messages until I heard it played back to me. I was very concerned. I was going to repeat, repeat it wrong. But I can see I did it all correctly. So it is important. You know, it was, it was amazing to see in this election how engaged everybody was, of course, at all levels of government, but how engaged and interested people were on city issues when we all had a lot of other things going on in our lives. And already, you know, how engaged I'm seeing people reaching out to me, residents, with, with concerns and ideas. So that's great to see. I know the impact because I've been in all of your inboxes in the past telling you what I think we should do. So now, on the other side, I'm receiving that feedback from the community. This is an exciting time for me. And I'm honored to serve Richfields.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to say congratulations. And it's going to be just wonderful working with you all. Looking forward to the future. Congratulations.
Absolutely. All right. Moving to our last presentation is the recognition of our Fire Chief Key Witch. And I will pass it to our City Manager, Katie Rodriguez, to open up the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble clicking things. So last night, the Fire Department put on a really nice ceremony. We had to keep the numbers down because of COVID, but that we were able to do it in person. We had a number of promotions we needed to recognize with the badging ceremony. And we also recognized that our Chief Wayne Key Witch is leaving us, which was, which was tough. I just want to personally thank Wayne, or Chief Key Witch, sorry. I've only worked with him for two years, but he's made such an impression on me that I have a hard time talking about it without my voice cracking. And actually, Kelly Wayne was putting this together today, our presentation. And someone had to come over and make sure she was okay because she couldn't keep it together in the office. So this has really rocked our, our city. And, you know, Wayne leaves an amazing legacy, such a strong department, so high performing. He has left us also with a really strong successor in Chief, wait, Chief Mike Dovish. And I just want a personal thank you to you, Chief Key Witch. You have been the voice of wisdom and a real leader among the directors. And so thank you very much. And I also wanted to see if Assistant City Manager Pam Demarton, go ahead, any comments?
Well, thank you, City Manager, for giving me just a couple of minutes to, huh, this is really hard. Really bittersweet to wish Wayne well as, you know, he's got other things going on in his life. And so really happy for you, Wayne. I mean, Wayne and I have worked together for over 20 years. He's been an amazing colleague. I've learned so much from him. As, as we all know, he's done so much for the department. But for me personally, he's just been a true teammate. I, God, I've been missing him just stopping by my office. We always just have great laughs and good discussions. But, you know, we've worked through some tough issues. But he is just that person you can go to and trust. And yet, he can lighten the moment, too. And we all need that. So when you've had a huge impact on me, I, obviously, I cherish our friendship. And I know, you know, we've got that forever. And I'm just grateful for everything you've done for the city. You've left us in a good place. And I know you're just a phone call away. So I'm wishing you and your family a lot. Good happiness and health, okay? That's the most important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's been, it's been an incredible run at, for 20 years at Richfield. But I absolutely love the city. The support of the council and previous councils has always been incredible. And we've been able to do some amazing things. And, you know, the Fire Department, you know, mission is first, taking care of everyone in their most, you know, excuse me. I like to say that we're in the business of the worst day of people's life. And our folks, your folks, do an amazing job every day. Thank you.
City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to turn it over to Assistant Wynn so she can play the clip. And she may want to provide some words as well.
Thank you. I don't know if all of you know, but I actually spend half of my time at the Fire Department. It's just my job. And I am so lucky to have spent my last year and a half with Wayne, even though it was interrupted and short. I'm truly grateful for everything. So with that, we do have a clip. Neil was grateful enough to spend some time and do the clip from last night. So it is about 15 minutes. But we wanted to make sure I include all the important parts. It was all important, but it's a, it's a great clip. So I'm going to have Jean play that for us.
Good evening. Welcome, friends, family, firefighters. Tonight is our Richfield Fire Department Promotion Ceremony. We haven't been able to do this for several months due to COVID. The last, we normally do this in front of the council, but we're lucky enough that we can do it tonight. Today, several of you will receive your first Richfield Fire Badge. And three of you will receive a new badge. A friend and fellow firefighter, Ken Perlman, formerly Chief of Brooklyn Park and now Chief of Wichita Falls, Texas, has written one of the best articles I've ever found discussing firefighter badges. The following is an excerpt from that article. "The badge itself represents both authority and protection. As firefighters, you are in a field that enjoys one of the highest levels of public trust. We enjoy the privilege of entering homes and businesses almost unencumbered. When you pin that badge on your chest, a place of prominent display, you are showing the public your commitment to stand in their defense against the threats to their lives and property, and you're vowed to ensure that their trust is not being misplaced. This badge should remind you to protect that trust at all cost. For the officers, your badge is no longer a display of the tools of a firefighter, but rather displays a symbol made from a combination of bugles that designate your rank and with it your authority. Your badge serves as a reminder that although you have achieved a higher level of authority, you also have been given a higher level of responsibility. Like those who are admonished to submit to your authority, your badge should be a reminder of the responsibility to forever value the trust that your firefighters place in you and the responsibility you have to guard their safety. Never forget that authority granted to you by your superiors will not be sustainable without the authority you have under your support." With that, I'd like to invite a firefighter back to jump, along with, whoever's pending, Christian, I believe, is pending here. So firefighter back each comes to us via St. Cloud. So firefighter Breckich comes to us via St. Cloud and Fridley predominantly. Uh, she's been with the department for over a year. We're very happy to have her. Um, and tonight she's gonna finally get her badge. Uh, would you please introduce who you have here with you?
Here with me tonight, I have my father and my sister and my boyfriend, Christian, who will be pinning my badge. And at home, I have some friends and family that weren't able to make it tonight.
So now, Chief Dobish, I'd like you to come up. I'm really glad this is happening here and not at another department. I'm not so happy how it came about, but I'm really happy I'm here. Share your opinion. This is my wife, Sherry. For those of you that haven't met her yet, um, she's obviously, like Wayne said, and Shay said, we couldn't do this without her family. So without her support, uh, I wouldn't be able to be in front of you today. So thank you, Sherry. So now I get the privilege of, uh, asking some more people to come up and receive their promotional badges. Um, Janelle, do you and John would like to join us? Janelle Wood was promoted to Battalion Chief of Risk Reduction, um, back in October. And, uh, our first Chief, our first Battalion Chief. So Janelle, congratulations.
Nobody told me I'd have to do a speech today. So I'm glad you guys all with John. Um, I'm here with John and I know that just like with you and all your families, you wouldn't be able to do it without the support of your loved ones.
Lieutenant Alaska, you and Kristen would like to join us? And Olivia too, I suppose?
That's I'm here with my wife, Kristen, and my daughter, Olivia. Um, I'd say what Janelle said, just appreciate our families for being there for our weird work schedules and everything else that comes with that job. So thank you.
Ryan, why don't you and Marcy come up? Ryan Wolf was hired back in February. Uh, this is, Marcy was saying this was actually the first time that she was able to, to be in the department. So welcome to our apparatus, man. Um, but congratulations.
Yes, uh, yeah, I'm here with my wonderful wife, Marcy. Uh, once again, just the support of our families and their lives and just the understanding that they have, especially with the year of pandemic and quarantine as well. Um, it's been great. So just thanks.
And how long have you been here?
Just once.
Maybe. Tonight we recognize the new firefighters, the ones that are pooping up, and, uh, the ones that are moving up of the organization. Alisa, Ryan, you're gonna love the career. This is an awesome job. Joe and Janelle, you're on your way up. Enjoy it. Protect these guys. That's our job. Congratulations to all of you and thank you, all of you guys, for all of your support. Uh, we couldn't, we couldn't do it without any one of you. Some people outside of the organization also heard that, that we were having the ceremony. Uh, so we did receive one submission, uh, and they asked if I could read it. I read it beforehand. It's clean enough that we can actually read it. Uh, so here I go. Maybe. It was obvious to all of us back at school that Wayne was destined to excel at whatever the hell he decided to do with his life. Little did we know that future Dr. Wayne would find his true calling instead in the fire prevention services. After a stint at working at a large robo dialing, uh, at, at a stint working in the world at large in robo dialing and fighting a good fight as a volunteer, he realized that the world didn't need another doctor. Goodbye, med school. What the world really needed was the most intelligent fire chief known to man. After an incredibly difficult year, both physically and emotionally, I want to thank you all for giving me back my best friend in one piece. Dude, it sucked for us to go enjoy the second halves of our lives. Love you, Dan. So if you're a cheer fire department, we have a tradition of giving a badge plaque when somebody retires. Normally, Wayne and I get to decide what goes on the plaque. This time it wasn't wrong, so Janelle got to help. So the Richfield Fire Department recognizes fire chief Wayne Keywich. This plaque is presented to you in appreciation of your more than 20 years of service to the citizens of Richfield, your selfless leadership, and impact beyond the RFD, or a couple of the many contributions that will continue to positively impact the Minnesota Fire Service for years to come. Thank you for your leadership. And normally we'd, uh, I, I do have one more special recognition that, uh, firefighter Shay Focalski, if you want to step forward. Chief, first off, I, I want to say how grateful and happy we all are that you were able to retire happy at all. Uh, that's, that's really impressive. Uh, we wanted to do something as a department and as a union to show our respect and our appreciation for your two decades of service. So, uh, we put together a, a host flag. So Jake and Ken want to come up and kind of build that. We built your host flag, much like the one up there, except, uh, it's a little bit smaller, so it's your house. I did want to build like a, an iron drone out of a bunch of fire matches, but I kind of tried to do that. Thank you for, for all you've done for our organization. You've positioned us very well for the future. Uh, we are eternally grateful for your leadership. And on, on personal note, uh, I appreciate all of the guidance that you've given me. You rarely told me what I wanted to hear, but you always told me what I needed to hear.
And Mayor City Manager, I love you guys. Chief Dobish, thank you for the kind words. Thank you for the kind words, Shay and all of you. I really appreciate it. It's said that time flies when you're having fun. Well, that's definitely true when you enjoy your job as much as I have. I look back to when I was a rookie firefighter, thinking about the future and saying to myself, 20 years is gonna seem like a really long time. And so many of you probably are thinking that too. I'm here to tell you it flew by and I can't quite believe it's been that long. Being a firefighter is not something you leave at the office. Rather, you're a firefighter all of the time. I believe it's one of the noblest professions, and for many, it's more than a job, it's a call. The fact that I care is a testament. To the members of the RFD, I can't tell you how proud I am of each of you. 24/7, 365, you exemplify all the traits of a professional by providing outstanding service to all, no matter what it entails. I would like to thank the mayor, council members, and those that have held these, those positions in the past that were unwavering in support of the Fire Department. I would also like to thank the community for their past and continued support. Thank you to City Manager Rodriguez and Past Manager Dobish for their support and guidance. To my fellow Richfield employees, thank you for all of the fun times. This is a special place to work. Please keep it that way. To be honest, it can get a, be a bit, it can be a bit lonely at the top. I would like to thank all of the chiefs, officers, and firefighters that have been there for me. And I'd like to personally thank Lieutenant Fire Chief Julie Seal and former Eden Prairie Fire Chief George Eskwens for their mentorship and friendship. Bryce, thank you for everything you've done for me and the department. You've made an incredible impact on my life. Mike, it's been a hell of a ride. I couldn't have done it without you. The department and the city are fortunate to have you as the next chief. I truly look forward to watching you for the department. Shay was just telling me that the food bars are already on order. Thank you to all my friends and family for your support over the years, especially during the last few months. Jack, LA Rob, I love you. Ruth, it will be included in the back. Thank you for saving my life twice and for supporting me every moment of every day. Thank you.
That is beautiful. Thank you so much for, to Neil for putting that video together. I believe there's one more video, right, that you wanted to share?
Uh, it's not a video, actually. Um, we do have the last call for Chief Keywich that came over dispatch last night.
Uh, Richfield, stand by for a special announcement. Wayne Keywich is leaving his position as Richfield Chief One. He began his career with Richfield in 2000 as a firefighter. He was promoted to Lieutenant, Assistant Chief, and in 2011, he moved to Fire Chief. Although this isn't the exit you had planned, if not for the global pandemic, there would be cake. Chief Keywich, you've been a leader, mentor, and friend. You've influenced our organization and beyond. We are forever grateful for your leadership and service. We know you have great things ahead. Best wishes.
Thank you for sharing that. Um, obviously, we're all extremely emotional right now. Um, and I'll open it up to council. If, um, if council members have anything they'd like to say to our chief. Oh, let's see, do I, oh, sorry. I thought I had to pass it to City Manager Rodriguez. It's their council, council comments. Councilmember Supple.
First of all, best wishes and thank you. I know in the last two years that you've always been that calm voice of reason and wisdom and somebody you could look to when we were having discussions of how we should move forward and you always kind of could sum it up and just put it in simple, direct language. And I've always respected that. And so I just wish you the best and thank you so much for all you've given for our city.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Wayland and then Councilmember Troutman.
Um, I really just want to echo that. Uh, obviously a lot has been said already, but I, I really, more than anything, the, that calm, uh, voice of reason and wisdom, um, and it's just very, I mean, it, it's literally been your job to be reliable, but even in the, the more metaphorical sense, uh, just a very reliable leader for our city. And so, um, I, I truly wish you well on whatever comes next. Um, and know that, uh, you'll still be doing good things in whatever roles that takes you to. So thank you.
Chief, it's just good to see you. Even virtually.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
And I, I just wanted, I wanted to say thank you. And I just wanted to say more, more than thank you, just a blessing on your life. Um, and I think, you know, I just, I kind of have to laugh, laugh at myself. You know, people who get really good at their job in IT and hacking, they pen test their system. If you successfully pen tested a couple of times, you know, the, uh, you're, 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 and then you, we just, uh, we're, we're grateful to, uh, all the, all the firefighters. Um, and when, you know, we, we talk about the pride of Richfield, we're so proud of our firefighters that you've led. And, um, you're a leader amongst leaders. Um, I know our directors look to you for, for leadership too, because of your, your integrity and your ability to, uh, to communicate, uh, the essential parts of things and do so with, uh, with grace and strength and humility. And, um, and your, your family will get a double portion of that and, you know, other parts of the community will. We will, we will miss you here. Um, but I'm so, I'm so glad. It's good to see your face and I just wish you every, every joy and every happiness in this, uh, this next chapter of your life.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm, uh, truly blessed to have been able to work for Richfield for 20-plus years. Um, it's, it's really an amazing place and I loved my job. And you saw how emotional I've been through this. And, uh, you know, I'm a very, very fortunate individual to feel like this about leaving a job. Not many people get that opportunity or ha, are blessed that way. So thank you.
And I just, if I just say one more thing, I would be remiss if I didn't say, you know, do you, the Fire Department has been instrumental in my life, in my block, more times than I can, can count. You've been at our house multiple times. When my grandfather passed away, you guys were here. And you, and you, 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 you forestalled that because of how many times you're able to come. And up and down our block, as people have gotten older and younger and new families have come in and people, you guys are, you guys are always here and you bring, you bring life and health and safety. And, um, and so, um, we, we owe you and your team, uh, a debt, chief. Um, and just great, great work. We're talking, we're talking about you and sometimes it's more important to talk about the people than their work, but you have a body of work which translates to lives saved. Um, so, so thank you.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember. You have very, very dedicated employees at the city of Richfield throughout all of the departments. People love People love the community that they work for. They really do. And thank you.
And I'd just like to say the ceremony, and it came, it came a little bit, it came through the video. We were all in tears, but man, that ceremony last night was just something else. And I felt fortunate to be there to thank you on behalf of the council and the community at large, chief. But it was so clear, the love that the department has for you. And to just see the generational and the formal transition of leadership and the legacy that you've left in Chief Dobich and in all of the firefighters. And to know that you are leaving a strong group and a strong team that love each other, that love this community and that you've built that. It was just really beautiful to be a part of. And if we had this celebration for you in the community, all of Richfield would be there. Everybody would be there. It would be a huge bash to celebrate you because you are absolutely one of Richfield's biggest heroes in our community. And we will miss you. And I also thank you for your steady leadership and guidance in turbulence and times of difficulty and times of leadership transition. We are indebted to you and we thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Another tough transition. We'll miss you, chief. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you. I see Chief Dobich, Assistant Chief Dobich, I think for just a little longer in battalion. And Chief Wood as well. Okay, I'll move us to our next item. That's the approval of the agenda.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hafer O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is a consent calendar and that will go to our City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action are necessary on these items. Tonight's consent agenda is Item A. Continue a public hearing to consider the approval of a resolution regarding the modification of the redevelopment plan for the Richfield Development Project area, the establishment of the 2020-2022 Tax Increment Financing District for the ME, a redevelopment tax financing district, and the proposed adoption of a tax increment financing plan. Item B. Consider approval of a joint powers agreement between the city of Richfield and the Metropolitan Council for construction of the D-line bus rapid transit project. Item C. Consider the first reading of the ordinance amending the city code subsection 721.03 related to connections and discharges to the stormwater system and schedule a second reading for January 26, 2021. Item D. Consider resolutions designating official depositories for the city of Richfield for 2021, including the approval of collateral. Item E. Consider a resolution authorizing the use of credit cards by city employees otherwise authorized to make purchases on behalf of the city. And finally, Item F. Consider approval to designate an acting city manager for 2021. And I submit all of these for your consideration as part of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Supple, I will move approval of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been, the motion has been made to move the agenda by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Are there any comments or questions on the consent calendar from council members? Councilmember Wayland?
We had a whole work session on the D-line bus route back in December. So if folks are really interested, I would encourage you to listen in on that and get all the details. But just want to, for folks who haven't heard about it, it is essentially an upgrade to Route 5 that goes from Mall of America up through Richfield along Portland Avenue all the way up through downtown Minneapolis and up to Brooklyn Center. And one of the most highly-used bus routes. And I'm really excited for that to be continuing to improve our transit system through Richfield.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Other comments or questions on the consent calendar? All right. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman? Thank you, which is... Councilmember Troutman, can you hear us? What? Okay, aye. Councilmember Hafer O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. One moment here, just let me look at my agenda. Okay, the next item, number seven, is the consideration of the designation of a mayor pro tem for 2021. So, the city charter states it's necessary to designate a city council member to serve as the mayor pro tem for those times that the mayor is absent from the city. Councilmember Simon Troutman served as the mayor pro tem in 2020. So, let's see here. Before I make the motion, I just wanted to share a couple comments. I am so thankful to Councilmember Troutman for serving for, for serving as the mayor pro tem in the past year. It's been a tough year, 2020. And I've appreciated all the things that you've done as the mayor pro tem, Councilmember Troutman. And in some ways, this role can be a little bit logistical, right? If I'm at a work meeting or something. But in other ways, it's like, who is that thought partner to help me think through all these things? And also, there's been times, I'm thinking of when Councilmember Garcia and Councilmember Troutman were the mayor pro tem, where, you know, you've had to also lead in that role through, in tough situations and in great times and great celebrations as well. And so you just never know in this position. It's, you know, it can be, it can be very much not a big deal. And then sometimes it really can be difficult. So, I really thank you, Councilmember Troutman, for serving in that space.
Thank you, thank you, mayor. And it wasn't tough. And I appreciate your leadership so much and the leadership of our council. And, yeah, we think we're all looking, we're looking forward to turning the page for 2020. And we're excited for this new council.
Absolutely. And I'll just make one last comment. In terms of the way that I think about this role as mayor pro tem, I feel like it's important to rotate the role through council. I have a phone call coming in, sorry. I think it's important to rotate the role through all the council members because it's just important that we all learn the different roles being on a council and now we all develop our leadership. And I just think rotating this position on an annual basis versus keeping one council member as the designated mayor pro tem makes much more sense. So, with that, I will make the motion to approve the city council designation of mayor pro tem for 2021 and designate Councilmember Supple to be the mayor pro tem.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Mayor Regan Gonzalez and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Are there any questions or comments on the item? Nope? All right. Well, Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman? I see that you said aye. Councilmember Hafer O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you, Councilmember Supple, for serving as the mayor pro tem for 2021.
Thank you.
The next item, item number eight, will go to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, mayor. This item is to consider confirmation of the appointment of Mike Dobash to Fire Chief/Fire Services Director for the city of Richfield. Staff conducted an internal recruitment to fill the position of Fire Chief and Fire Services Director due to Chief Wayne Kiwicz's retirement. Process consisted of the following. Meeting with the Civil Service Commission on December 4th of 2020, where they approved the minimum qualification for the position and an internal search process. We only had one applicant and joined, this is City Manager Kade Rodriguez, joined Assistant City Manager Pam Dimitrenko, HR Manager Krista Guzman, to interview Acting Chief Dobash on December 14th. The interview was observed by Civil Service President Mary Stratton. The Civil Service Commission approved the list of eligible candidates at their December 15th meeting. And City Manager Rodriguez shared that she intended to appoint Acting Chief Dobash to Fire Chief pending council confirmation. In addition to her belief that Acting Chief Dobash is the best candidate to build on Chief Kiwicz's success in creating a strong department, Acting Chief Dobash has demonstrated his leadership and ability to serve as chief for the past six months. He did so under extreme conditions. We were all rocked by Chief Kiwicz's cardiac events. COVID has continued to disrupt. There have been several staff transitions in the fire department. Acting Chief Dobash has managed the transition well. His focus has been on the department's mission and his team. He's also become a key member of the city's leadership team. And so I'm excited. I know we've been talking about this throughout the night, but excited to make the motion for it to be official and will move that we confirm the appointment of Mike Dobash to Fire Chief and Fire Services Director for the city of Richfield.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second that.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Any comments, questions from council members? I think we said a lot of it upfront. We are very lucky to have you as our chief, Chief Dobich. And thank you for your leadership in this time. And thank you, Chief Kiwicz, for setting us up so beautifully and just creating such a strong leadership team. We're very, very fortunate for this excellent, great transition in our fire department. Any other comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, mayor. Chief Dobich, I just wanted to say we're so grateful, we're so happy that you're able to join us in this leadership opportunity. We know you could be chief in a lot of cities and we're really glad that you're able, you're able to be here and lead us. And it's, I'm sure it's already been, I say from our perspective, it seems seamless. I'm sure there was, I just, it's a glib of me to say that, given what 2020 was. But I think that's just such a reflection of your leadership and the institutions and structures that Chief Kiwicz put in place. So, it's not a welcome because you've been here, but we're just, we're really glad that you're here. And thanks for accepting this mantle of leadership.
Councilmember Troutman, thank you. And council members, thank you for the support, mayor as well. I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Any additional comments from council members? All right. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hafer O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
The motion has been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you, council. I appreciate the support.
Thank you. We are so fortunate. All right. I will move us to our next item and that is the city manager's report with City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, mayor. We are implementing our new process tonight. As part of our new procedures, I'm going to attempt to answer questions that were raised at the previous week's open forum so the public can hear the answers. We'll also continue, as we always have, to send the answers directly to folks. So, we had one comment. It was a letter that we read at the open forum at our last meeting. I know it was way back in December, early December. It was fairly lengthy, so I'll try to summarize it and summarize our response. It was from Ms. Balaban. And it had some questions about the 2021 budget. And she wrote, "I am asking each of you to please vote to put a hold on nonessential expenses in all areas and ask for detailed cost-benefit justification reports for any expenditure over a certain threshold." She didn't identify which, either temporarily or permanently, especially if it affects the general fund. The letter then went on to question some specific expenses, given the financial fallout from the pandemic. So, our response is we, staff really did try to balance funding, you know, those critical priorities that invest in a better future for Richfield with building our reserves for expected financial instability over the next few years. I presented a budget that I felt did that and we did pass that budget that night. We have budgeted and we continue to support our residents that are in need because of the pandemic with additional contracts for rental assistance and through our housing programs. We do feel that the expenditures, or I'm sorry, we feel that the expenditures that were questioned, specifically the dump trunk and the lift station improvements at Wood Lake, we do feel that they're essential. The dump truck was past its useful life and repairs on it were beginning to be costly. Also, the improvements at Wood Lake Lift Station, it will ease flooding. But flooding has gotten increasingly worse over the years. It leaves the park unusable, some of the trails unusable for many months or many weeks. It could eventually spread to surrounding areas as well. And we felt like if both projects would be deferred, they would be more expensive. We no longer allow car allowances for staff, but we do have some staff that were grandfathered in. We do reimburse for mileage for any work-related travel. Some staff are provided mobile phones, the majority are not. And some staff receive a small stipend per month if they have to use their phone for work. And that is just, that's a new reality for the workforce. So, that's all I have for that. I don't know if you have questions on that, but again, we're, this is a new process. So, if you need more details. I also just wanted to provide a brief COVID update. I'm sorry, my voice is starting to go. There's actually some good news. The trajectory went, way back in, way back, it's not way back, it's two months ago. In early November, the cases in the deaths were just, if you looked at it on a graph, it was just like, just straight up vertical. And now that's coming down almost as quickly. Cases are still much higher than they were this summer. So, everyone should continue to be vigilant, but it is good news. Also, the vaccine rollout has begun, which is also good news. You know, the first group that they're trying to vaccinate is Phase 1A. And those are the workers that are on the front lines of this, you know, mostly in healthcare settings, but also our first responders. And so they have begun to get vaccinated and that's been on our social media. Uh, group one B will be, uh, groups that, uh, uh, more frontline workers, adults seventy-five years and older and people with high-risk medical conditions. We've gotten a few questions, you know, residents calling and saying that they want to be put on the list for vaccines. You know, there is not a list that the city is, um, putting together. Uh, if you are in these high-risk groups that are getting the vaccine early, you will be contacted. Um, we will, of course, share information when we're, when we're, when vaccines will be available for the general public. Also, a brief equity update, and this was touched on earlier, but our new equity and inclusion administrator, um, his name is Bill Green. He will be starting with the city on January nineteenth. And we just had a meeting today to plan for his first few days and onboarding. And I'm hoping that he can attend, uh, the next work session that we have on January twenty-sixth. And I, I can take any questions that you have.
Thank you, city manager Rodriguez. Questions or comments on the city manager report from councilmembers? Nope. Great. All right. Thank you so much, city manager Rodriguez. All right. Who wants to do the claims and payroll? Now that La Jefa's not around. I would say we could have done an arm wrestling match if we were in the council chambers, but that's not gonna happen, so. Anyone want to volunteer? Should I just pick somebody?
Eric, I would move that our mayor pro temp would do the honor to, um, to move claims and payroll.
I love that.
All right. So, this is councilmember Supple and I will move claims and payroll.
It's councilmember Troutman and I will, uh, I will second. And we hope you're watching, councilmember Garcia, we love you.
I hope you're not watching and have something better to do than watching us. But we'll see. Any other comments? All right, um, analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved. Then the last item before we adjourn is hats off to hometown hits, so I will pass it on to councilmember Hayford O'Leary to start.
All right, um, yeah, I guess the one thing, and I'm, you know, a little bit new to this segment, but the one thing I did want to highlight that I've been observing that I think is really cool is seeing people online sharing their experiences with local restaurants. I know that they're really struggling right now, so somebody doing something as simple as like, I went to Sandy's, I got a burger, it was really good, is really nice because we get sort of into our habits and it's hard to find new things now, so I think I've just been appreciating that effort of turning neighbors on to local businesses and sharing good experiences.
Thank you so much, councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, mayor. Um, just a, a couple quick, uh, announcements. Uh, one, uh, just a, just a quick reminder, um, spent more time in Wood Lake this week and, um, the outdoor, uh, cross-country skiing station has been very, very popular and it's almost completely, um, if not full, just always, always busy. A lot of people are taking advantage of that. So if you're feeling stir crazy and it's easy to be, kind of feel that way, um, just take an opportunity. You don't have to ma- you don't have to invest in equipment, it's right there. Um, you do have to make an appointment, um, but that's a great opportunity to, to be outside. And we already had an opportunity to, uh, to take our hats off and, um, and, uh, but once again, um, uh, we love you, Chief Kiwicz and, um, and, uh, Chief Dobish, so welcome, welcome to the team.
Thank you, councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Wayland.
Uh, thank you, mayor. The only, uh, other thing I had to add is just to lift up, um, we had a chance, uh, it was just yesterday morning to meet with our, uh, legislators at the state level, um, at the county level, um, and connect with, with them on our, our city priorities for this year. Uh, for folks who, um, are interested in, in state-level politics, but they just recently kicked off their legislative session for the year, um, with Richfield being, uh, parts of it in two different districts. We have four, two house representatives and two senators who rep- uh, represent our area for the state level. Um, and three of them are, uh, familiar faces and wanna also congratulate and welcome, uh, Representative Emma Greenman, who's now, uh, just started and is representing our northeast corner of Richfield as well as parts of South Minneapolis. So, um, appreciated the chance to collaborate with them, um, and, uh, wanted to congratulate her.
Thank you, councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to everyone in the community that's continued to wear their masks and do the social distancing because that's the reason that I think those COVID numbers are coming down. So I appreciate that. And also thank you to all the staff that's had to adapt and, and work to get us through this pandemic and that's very much appreciated. And also to the Public Works Department, we just had a big snowfall and we got to see once again what an efficient job they do of clearing out our streets. And then the last thing I want to say is, given the events of the last week that have really tested our democracy and all of our public institution, I think it's really important that we redouble our efforts, that we get involved and we participate in our democracy. And so if you are interested in being in a commission, those, um, applications are still open for city commissions through January fifteenth. So it's really important for all of us to get involved because I really do believe in our democracy and I think we can all be part of making justice and equity and it all work. So, please get involved.
Thank you so much, councilmember Supple. And I'll just end by once again saying, I think the night and, uh, you know, we're, the night is about Chief, um, Kiwicz and the change in transition and leadership and the great fire department that we have, um. We, we are very lucky and placed in such a good position as a community because of the leadership of, of, um, Chief Kiwicz. And, um, related to what councilmember Troutman said, we also have the Richfield Ice Arena open for folks, but you also have to register. So if you go online and register, um, you and your family members to get, go to the public skate and get some ice time, that's another way, uh, a safe way to get some physical activity out in the community. So consider going online and, and going to the ice rink to skate. All right, we have no other business, so I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.